It's uh, they're not making any changes. They're just making some adjustments back to something. So... We're gonna do, we're gon- we're gonna do, we're gonna do an ice storm. And uh, nobody else can do it, so we need a job, but... I guess the governor will be the guy that'll go. And then I'll... We'll start on the apartment right down the street. Uh, there will be quite traffic tonight. And then we'll see if there are, just uh, head up the road and get to the tower. But, they won't be able to make any change. Shouldn't have fallen off the roof like that. Well, I think the apartment will be falling. Okay. Three o'clock.
The house will stand at ease until ten fifteen. The house will stand at ease until ten fifteen.
The hour of convening having arrived, all members of the House will please report to the floor and take your seats. All members will report to the floor of the House and the clerk will ring the bell. (Music) All members will please take your seats. We're about to have the morning roll call. We're going now to have the morning roll call. All members present will please vote green to signify their presence in the chamber and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machines. Well, good morning on a Friday. At least we got the sunshine out today. Always a good thing. We, um, someone has lo- if you have lost a cellphone in the anteroom, then please come see Betsy after we do the devotion. But don't come before because during the devotion, I'm gonna go through all your text messages and emails and I may keep it after that, who knows? Doorkeepers will please close the doors and keep them closed. We will begin our day with scripture reading and prayer by our chaplain today, after which we will pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. And as we try to do often, we have one of our own who will lead us in our devotion this morning. A gentleman that I got to know when he was first running for the House several years ago. He struck me as, uh, that he had potential. He was very shy. He, um, reluctant to express his opinion. And, um, kind of a quiet guy. Um, but Representative Dominic Loricchia has been a great member, but more importantly, he, uh, lives a life of character and integrity. And I know he's an inspiration to me and I'm sure he is to many members that have gotten to know him. And I am looking forward to his leading us this morning. And it is my pleasure to represent the gentleman, to introduce the gentleman from Coffey County, Representative Dominic Loricchia.
Well, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm gonna try to make it through this without crying and take away all the things he said about me as he was introducing to me, but, uh, anytime I have an opportunity to get up and talk a little bit about what God's done in my life, it really, um, it really hits home. And, uh, I can promise you of all the things that my mama thought I would be doing when I was about fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, she was not telling her friends that I would be a state representative and that I'd be doing the morning devotional. But, uh, I did wanna say some thank yous real quick. Many of you reached out to me when my dad passed away back in August and, uh, you may know my story, but I did not know my daddy growing up. Um, my mom raised four kids by herself and God just helped her and she did the best she could, but about ten years ago, just out of the blue, I told my mom, I said, "Mom, I think I'm gonna try to find my daddy." And just reach out to him. I didn't want her to think that I wanted to call him because she did not provide everything I needed. And one of those God stories, and old Corbett's heard it a couple of times, I walked in the door of my house that night at nine o'clock, my phone rang and it was my daddy on the phone. It was my daddy calling me. Had not seen him in almost twenty-six years, twenty, twenty-four years. And from that point, we started developing a relationship and we lost him this year, but, but we're good. Uh, the other thank you is thank you for what all of you helped us do yesterday for South Georgia, or most all of you helped us do, but we, uh... We are very appreciative of what, of what this body has done for a part of the state that many of you may have never even visited. And it means a lot to our friends like Sam Watson and Clay Perkel and others who we talked to on the phone and had lost tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars with just these two men. That's just two. Thank you for what you did and we appreciate that. But as we were voting on that yesterday, I thought about how blessed Georgia is. That many states under similar circumstances could not have convened in a special session and even be able to afford to pay for the special session, much less appropriate the revenue necessary to just help a little bit for what we did. And Georgia's been blessed over the last several years because of many of you sitting in this chamber, all of you. And so, uh, we're blessed and God has blessed us. But what I wanted to do this morning is really drive home who God is. We talk a lot about God, "I'll pray for you and God bless you and thank God." But what I wanted to try to do was drive home this morning who God is as we spend a few moments in devotional for Him. The God that we talk about is literally the God of the universe, so much so that God created the universe, created absolutely everything from nothing. Now, if I told you this morning to close your eyes and look into the darkness and think of nothing, you could not do it. You know why? Because you'd be trying to think of nothing. And in that realm, nothing is something. We cannot comprehend nothingness. We cannot comprehend everything, but God can. He created it. In an instant, and in the definition of instant really means that there's no measurable time from the moment God thought of it and the time it happened. That is an instant. And so, God created the heavens and the earth in an instant. It says that God created time, space, and matter in an instant. Some of you may have heard of that as the Trinity of Trinities. If God created time and matter but no space, where would He have put time and matter? If He created matter and space but no time, when would He have put it? He had to create them all instantly. And so, as I started to prepare for trying to describe who God is, I realized I can't describe Him. I certainly can't even describe what He's done in my life. The first week I walked in this Capitol, I teared up and got chill bumps and come sit in my chair and I'd say, "God, are you sure that I'm the one that's supposed to be sitting in this seat?" And He said, "Well, your predecessor sat there, so you'll be good." I'm just kidding, he's a friend of mine. Uh... But I, I, I love him and, and so please know that that's a joke. Um, we, we, we literally live on like the same road. He lives on one side, a mile or two down from me, but, uh, our brains cannot comprehend who God is. Our finite minds cannot comprehend an infinite God. We just simply cannot do it. Isaiah chapter forty, verse twenty-eight says, "Don't you know? Haven't you heard? The Lord is the eternal God, the Creator of the ends of the earth. He does not grow tired," and in that context, that means physically tired, "and He does not grow weary. He don't get frustrated, he don't get spiritually broken. And His understanding cannot be fathomed." God cannot be fathomed by us. We can't understand it, we, we'll never will. God is truly the only one that has ever created anything from scratch. You know, I would joke with my mom or my granny or my wife and it'd be, "Yeah, I made that ca- cake from scratch." I said, "No, you didn't." "Yeah, I did." "Nah." "You certainly didn't make the flour and the wheat and..." "But you didn't make the chicken, they made the eggs, et cetera, et cetera." And so, God is truly the only one that has ever made something from nothing, completely from scratch. Everything we make, God provides the materials or the ingredients. We merely mold, transform, shape, and manufacture things from what God gives us the materials. I look around this chamber, I go to some of these places where they manufacture tractors or they manufacture cargo trailers and whatever, and I, I think about that from time to time, about how God has literally blessed us with everything we have, everything we ever will need, ever have needed. Genesis chapter one, verse one says that, "In the beginning God created the heavens and the earth." And in Psalms thirty-three, nine, "For when He spoke, the world began; it appeared at His command." And I do, I do want you to imagine this for just a moment, what that looked like. That from complete and total nothingness to all of what you can partly see when you walk outside at night and see all the millions of stars and look out into the heavens, that God created that completely from scratch. And I don't know that we think about that in the way that we should. The main point is that God created everything from absolutely nothing, but I want you to remember this, this is the takeaway. He created me and you. And I spend a lot of time thinking about why. Why me, Lord? Good and bad. And I continue to read in Genesis chapter two, verse seven, says that, "Then the Lord God formed a man from the dust of the ground and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, and the man became a living being." And so, in that context, when God took the dust and breathed His breath into it and His breath of life into it, it became man. Man became Dominic. And God will use me in the way that He sees fit because He created me for that purpose. We are who we are, first of all, because of the life breath of God, but ironically, our every breath depends on Him. On an average, a person breathes about sixteen times per minute, about nine hundred times per hour, sixteen thousand times a day, or about twenty-four thousand times a day. You'll breathe more than six hundred and forty-seven million breaths in your life if you live to be about eighty, that means I'll probably get about four hundred and eighty million. You will breathe a breath, sixteen breaths a minute for your entire life, taken for granted almost every single one of them. Our very breath depends on God. If you wanna know how important breath is, if you'll walk from Chairman Powell's office up to Chairman Hatchett's office, there's ninety-three steps from Chairman Powell's office to Chairman Hatchett's office, and I give completely out of breath at about step seventy. That's right there around Meadow's office. I'd be remissed if I didn't mention him and his family. We've lost some good members for various reasons, but the one I think that grieves us the most is when we lose our friends, uh, not necessarily members, but when we lose our friends and we pray for that family. But moment to moment, we rely on the gracious gift of breath from God that makes human life possible. And I'm about to share the part that I really believe will change your life, change mine. A life, the life that Dominic lives, that God breathed His breath into, a life of love, sacrifice, forgiveness, service, and worship is simply giving God His breath back. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, God, I, I can't even imagine why I'm the one up here doing the devotional this morning. But if it be Your will, God, I'll come here and share who You are to me and how much You've loved me every minute of every day. But God, thank You for the opportunity You give us to spend a few moments in devotion and reflect on who You are and how much You love us. God, help us to use every breath that You give us, to inhale it into our lives, let it sink in, but everything we live out needs to be an exhale of love to You. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doorkeepers will unlock the doors. Chair recognizes Chairman Darlene Taylor, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits.
Mr. Speaker, your committee on information and audits has read the proceedings from the previous legislative day and found them to be correct.
Chairman Taylor, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the journal of the previous legislative day has been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the journal? The Chair here has none and the journal is confirmed. The clerk will read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Mr. Verrance, on the fifty-ninth, moves following me establish the order of business under the first part of the period unanimous consents, morning orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? The Chair here has none and the resolution is adopted. No first readers, no second readers.
The main point is that God created everything from absolutely nothing, but I want you to remember this. This is the takeaway. He created me and you. And I spend a lot of time thinking about why. Why me, Lord? Good and bad. And I continue to read in Genesis, chapter two, verse seven, says that, "Then the Lord God formed a man from the dust of the ground, and breathed into his nostrils the breath of life, and the man became a living being." And so in that context, when God took the dust and breathed his breath into it and his breath of life into it, it became man. Man became Dominic. And God will use me in the way that he sees fit because he created me for that purpose. We are who we are, first of all, because of the life breath of God, but ironically, our every breath depends on him. On an average, a person breathes about sixteen times per minute, about nine hundred times per hour, sixteen thousand times a day, or about twenty-four thousand times a day. You'll breathe more than six hundred and forty-seven million breaths in your life if you live to be about eighty. That means I'll probably get about four hundred and eighty million. You will breathe a breath, sixteen breaths a minute for your entire life, taking for granted almost every single one of them. Our very breath depends on God. If you want to know how important breath is, if you'll walk from Chairman Powell's office up to Chairman Hatchett's office, there's ninety-three steps from Chairman Powell's office to Chairman Hatchett's office, and I give completely out of breath at about step seventy. That's right there around Meadows' office. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention him and his family. We've lost some good members for various reasons, but the one I think that grieves us the most is when we lose our friends. Not necessarily members, but when we lose our friends and we pray for that family. But moment to moment, we rely on the gracious gift of breath from God that makes human life possible. And I'm about to share the part that I really believe will change your life, change mine. A life, the life that Dominic lives, that God breathed his breath into, a life of love, sacrifice, forgiveness, service, and worship is simply giving God his breath back. Let's pray. Heavenly Father God, I can't even imagine why I'm the one up here doing the devotional this morning, but if it be your will, God, I'll come here and share who you are to me and how much you've loved me every minute of every day. But God, thank you for the opportunity you give us to spend a few moments in devotion and reflect on who you are and how much you love us. God, help us to use every breath that you give us, to inhale it into our lives, let it sink in, but everything we live out needs to be an exhale of love to you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair recognizes Chairman Darlene Taylor, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits.
Mr. Speaker, your committee on information and audits has read the proceedings from the previous legislative day and found them to be correct.
Chairman Taylor, the Chair of the Committee on Information and Audits, reports that the journal of the previous legislative day has been read and found to be correct. Is there any objection to the confirmation of the journal? The Chair here has none, and the journal is confirmed. The clerk will read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Mr. Lawrence, on the fifty-ninth, moves following me establish that the order of business under the first part of the period unanimous consents, morning orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? The Chair here has none, and the resolution is adopted. No first readers, no second readers, no reports of standing committees. If you have signed up for a morning order, make your way to the front of the chamber as soon as all the members have had an opportunity to greet Representative Luriccia, then we will go on to morning orders. I anticipate we are going to have one measure to come before the body today, that being Chair is going to ask all members of the House that are in the chamber, please take your seats, cease conversation, give respect and attention to the members in the well. We have a number of people who have signed up for morning orders, and as we discussed yesterday, there's a cumulative time for that. Chair is going to stretch that just a little bit. Three minutes each, three minutes each for morning orders. Chair recognizes Representative Teasley for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I will do my very best to get done in three minutes. For those of you who know, I'm just run through a very challenging election and in the process of looking through recounts and those kinds of things, the margin was very, very close. But assuming that the results stay the same that they currently are, I will have come up just a little bit short. So I want to take a few minutes and thank as many people as I can. Quite honestly, when I sat down and made this list, I came up with a list of a whole host of people, and I don't know that I'll be able to get to everybody here today. First off, I want to thank my wife and my children. I'm still madly in love with my high school sweetheart. We've been dating since I was fifteen years old, and she is still the love of my life. And I could not have been involved in politics without her support. She has always been my number one supporter, and we are truly blessed to be the parents of three teenagers, and I mean truly blessed. I know teenage years can be difficult, but we're very, very blessed. When it comes to members in the House, I want to thank, first, I want to thank Wes Cantrell. First time, I was elected, when I was, my first session, I started thinking through, who's a pastor, who's a pastor who might not, people might not naturally think of to come invite and be their pastor of the day? And I thought about my friend Wes Cantrell, the longest friendship I have in this body. And I thought, you know, he will probably never step foot on the House of Representatives ever again, and so this will be a neat little opportunity for him. I can have him be my pastor of the day. So my first session, I had Wes Cantrell be my pastor of the day. And I just want to say, Wes, I love you. You are a constant source of encouragement and very, very good friend. I think of Ed Sutler, the first man who gave me a political job. He had just gotten elected to the State House in two thousand and four. I'd asked him three times, could I be his legislative aide? And he's like, I have no idea what I'd do with a legislative aide. But finally, he relented, and I was his legislative aide in the two thousand and five session. And I want to say thank you. You are iron who sharpens iron in my life. You always point me to the Savior, and I thank you very much. Think of two other guys in here, John Pizold and Michael Caldwell, two of the sharpest minds and very much two of the sharpest wits I've ever dealt with. You guys keep me laughing. I'm grateful for your service to your community and your deep and abiding friendship. To Burt Reeves, a man who, we share a lot of the same community, and you have been, it's been a joy to represent the Cobb County and specifically Marietta community together. Your friendship and constant encouragement, you have been nothing but encouraging to me the entire time we've been around each other in politics. Your friendship means more to me than you know. And to my seatmates for the last couple of years, Jan and Katie, thank you. You've been a delight to sit with, and just a word of advice to you, Micah, if Jan ever offers you a breath mint, take it. To Jay Powell, I just want to say thank you. It has been a delight to serve in the Ways and Means Committee, and you run a committee the way I think it ought to be run. We have occasionally disagreed on policy, not often, we've occasionally disagreed on policy, but I appreciate the way that you have handled that. You've never taken it personally, and you've always encouraged input along the process. To those who nominated me, different times who nominated me in my run for Vice Chair, think of Terry Rogers, think of Darlene Taylor, think of Brian Strickland over in the Senate now, may he rest in peace. Think of Jeff Duncan and Clay Perkel. Thank you to those fine people who have supported me and stuck your necks out there for me. To a couple of friends across the aisle, Darshun, who I told to stick around, I hope she's in here, there you are, I was looking for you over there. You are an absolute delight. I love you. Thank you for your friendship. Thanks for keeping me laughing. To Carla Drenner, I know it's always made people think it funny that you and I are very good friends, as I like to quote Bonnie Raitt, "Let's give them something to think about. Let's give them something to talk about." And I have enjoyed our very thorough and deep conversations where we've engaged in honest disagreement. We agree on a lot more than we disagree. You are one of the most intellectually consistent people I know, and I love you dearly. To a woman we know as Alicia Morgan, she's now Alicia Cremarti, what a blessing. We have, we've talked, oh gosh, for years about going on the circuit together and talking about, how do we bring, how do we bring the races together? How do we talk about racial issues and have honest conversations about that? We've all, we joked that we'd have to both be out of politics before we'd ever do that. But what a delightful friend, what a dear friend. When my father was diagnosed with cancer in the early part of the two thousand and twelve session, she was the first person to pull me aside, pull me into that anteroom over there and said, "Let's pray together." So Alicia, if you're listening, I love you and I thank you. To Kevin Cook, "Your commitment to speaking truth in love into my life has made me a better man and I think a better legislator." Thank you very, very much. Scott Turner, oh, oh Scott Turner. There is not a person in this room that I have laughed with more or that has driven me more crazy in the last five and a half years. We have, we've probably talked more, we've talked deeply, more deeply about the things that, in life, that matter, about walking in faith when it doesn't make sense. I had no idea when you got involved in politics that you and I would be as close as we are. I love you. You are a great source of encouragement to me, and I thank you. As a matter of fact, one quick aside about Scott is usually about once a year, I need to say, "Hey, man, we need to take a break." But he is, he's always been very understanding, and when I'm ready to come back, he allows me to be his friend again. And you and I will catch Mose, if I haven't burned you out on Mose sometime soon. But in politics, trust may be the hardest thing to earn and the most valuable thing to have. And there are two people that I can't go any further without talking about. That's Mike Dudgeon and Buzz Brockway. Mike, if he was, he was in the room earlier, I don't know if he is now, there he is in the back. Mike, you are not only smart, you're gracious, you're insightful, you're wise, and you're kind. I can't imagine having a better sounding board throughout politics. Thank you, brother. And to Buzz, "When I read Galatians five and I read about the fruits of the Spirit," where's Buzz? Okay, there you are. "When I read, when I read Galatians five and I read about the fruits of the Spirit, I can't help but think of you. Your love for people and your love for the Lord are a testimony to us all. Your family is a blessing to my family. We've spent, as many of you may know, he and I, we've spent vacations together. You are like a brother to me, and I love you more than words can express." Let me leave you with this, sorry about getting there a little sappy, I didn't expect that. I want to challenge you with this, please don't let this title, being state representative, go to your head, please don't let it be your identity. When I first got and started getting involved in politics, and Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me a few extra minutes, I see the light. You've been very gracious, and I'm thankful.
Better to ask for forgiveness than permission, I guess.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you. When I first got involved in politics and met a man some of you served with by the name of Bobby Franklin, I came up to him at the Cobb GOP, and I said, "Hello, Representative Franklin." And he almost sternly turned to me and said, "Call me Bobby." And I took from that moment that he was not overly impressed with his own title, that he was just Bobby. I used to tell constituents back home, "If I ever insist you call me by my title, please run someone against me, I need to come home." And so my challenge to you is don't take yourself too seriously. Don't ever be about the title. We've been, we've been asked to serve on public policy and public service, and please don't ever let the title get the best of you. So with that, I just want to say thank you, and one, sorry, one last thing I thought of. Those of you who have asked how I'm doing, I'm doing great, and part of that is because my identity isn't in being elected, and part of that is because I don't believe I'm done with politics just yet. So I just want to say thank you to you all, I love you. It's been an honor to serve with you, and I'm excited about what you're going to do in the days ahead. I yield the well.
Chair recognizes Representative Gasolay for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I come this morning as the guy who may or may not be coming back. I'm the guy that's having the redo election, and that's all in the news right now. But those of you who didn't follow it, I had a long summer of litigation over a election that had a lot of disenfranchised voters, and I know that's a popular topic on local radio, but I was going to come here and talk to you all about it real quick because I know I have a limited amount of time. What I did is I had a case back in the primary where I lost the race by a certain number of votes, and then I found out that a bunch of my supporters did not get a ballot with my name on it, and they should have. And we had to litigate that, and the county, Habersham County, it was the main county at fault, confessed to the crime, but then we spent three months in litigation even after they admitted fault to the level that deserved a new election. So what I'm doing, in case I don't come back, is I'm challenging all of you, both parties, to look at our election system, look at our flaws in our county governments that are creating a tremendous amount of these problems, and think about what we need to do, because our democracy should be important to everyone in here, and accurate votes, and the fact that no voter in this state should ever be disenfranchised, and I don't think there's anybody in any party who thinks they should be, and we need to work to see that doesn't happen. And a lot of people try to, even news outlets that covered my story tried to blame it on the current governor-elect, but all the blame, in my case, should be put on county governments not doing their job correctly. And I think we all need to operate in truth in both parties, and let's fix this problem because it is a serious problem, and I feel like we have the technical expertise within our state. I went to school up the street at North Avenue, and I know they have the technical expertise to help us solve this problem in a way that it won't happen again. Now, the one thing I'll end on, there are some significant changes in the law that need to be made that I have, and if I'm unfortunate to not come back, I'm going to make sure that I point those out to my colleagues. But in my case, the But in my case, the Attorney General of Georgia filed a motion to dismiss my case after the county had confessed to enough errors to redo the election. That should never happen in Georgia. And that story hasn't been covered by the media because they were more focused on making Brian Kemp look bad, but we really need to focus on what really happened and make sure that what happened to me never happens again in this state. I hope to see all of you in January and I appreciate your time. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Representative Bentley for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm going to yield just for a moment to, in the words of the late Dr. Benjamin E. Mays of The Morehouse College, "Every person was born into this world to do something distinctive and something unique and if he or she doesn't do it, it will never be done." The very unique and distinctive work of our very own Chairman John Meadows has been done and we thank God for his life and we thank God for his legacy that will continue to live on for years to come. And so on behalf of all members of the Georgia House of Representatives, we would like to present this keepsake blanket in memory of Chairman John Meadows to his family. And at this time, they will present the keepsake blanket.
I texted Marie this morning to let her know that there was an expression that's going to be going on this morning and I told her about the words that Speaker Ralston and Chairman Erhard and all of us had expressed on Tuesday. So I know they will see this in a very, very warm manner and I think this right here expresses our love for Chairman John Meadows. And Patty Bentley, we thank you. I think this was a great expression on behalf of the House. So thank you very much, Representative Bentley.
Again, this is on behalf of all 180 members of the Georgia House of Representatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative Bentley. I know with, your plate is full and for you to take time and do that is amazing. Chair recognizes Representative Stovall for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And this with clarity on yesterday when I said the answer is no, I was referring to my remarks and not to the Speaker's request saying my time was up. But in all seriousness, we do have some major issues within our state agencies on how their decisions are made on policies. The particular division in DFACS was preventive and community support division where they canceled a contract for convenience as retaliation to a nonprofit organization. There were no other nonprofit contracts canceled. There is no appeals process unlike in other state departments. What recourse was there for the high school students and their principal who would have benefited and who had been benefiting from this particular nonprofit? We need state employees who believe they are committed to the safety, self-sufficiency and well-being of Georgia children and families like what's stated in a Blueprint for Change magazine that's given out across the state. This particular director in this division, when I questioned her about what happened, sat with a blank face and nonchalant about what was really the end users and how that was going to negatively impact them. In closing, I would like to work with any of my colleagues for tighter regulations on these policies that are made by bureaucrats who are not, when we are not in session. Because at the end of the day, it is our constituents who come to us and you think about how many constituents might not have known to contact their legislator when issues are happening. And that, and then the offset of what's not going to happen when they cancel the contract in the middle, so the contract had not even finished and these kids were very upset they had already signed up to participate in the program. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chair recognizes Representative Caldwell for a morning order.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I will be brief and quick for you. I bring some good news from my family. You guys, I've served in this house with you guys for six years now and at about year two in that mark, we had, my wife and I had our first child. So I came in a dumb kid who'd just gotten married. I ended up a dumb kid with one kid and now I'm about to be a dumb kid with two kids. So in April of next year, we'll have a baby girl and I wanted to tell y'all, I wanted to, I'm excited about this because one day I get to show my baby girl, me standing in the well of the house, talking about how excited I am to meet her. So just want to share it with you guys and thank y'all.
Chair recognizes Representative Kendrick for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. This is my annual rant that I didn't get to give during the normal session. Many of you know that my birthday is August the 28th, the same as Chairman Meadows and I don't get the pleasure of having the Speaker call out my name because we're out of session. So for those of you that have birthdays outside of the legislative session, if you could stand so that the rest of the House can give us a round of applause, then I would appreciate
Chair recognizes Chairman Stevens for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'll invite my cousin to come join me as well. Mickey, for those of you new members, we are not twins. Not identical. Want to mention the Hope Scholarship for a moment. We've got our first casualty, we got a call, Mickey and I did, from President Dozier the other day of probably one of the oldest institutions in the state. And of course, she was informing us that even after we'd spent some money on some new buildings and dorms and things that the, their enrollment was going down. So they're going to have to let some people go. As a percentage of the Hope, of course, it has dropped, that pays towards the tuition. My point is we're going to have to take a look at this. It is a symptom, it's other things that are going to come on the heels of that. So just keep that in the back of your mind. This is something that we promised, you know, for me, Bo, Ivy and Walker, I promised you guys that the Hope would be there for you. And there's a whole lot of Bo's, Ivy's and Walkers in every one of your districts. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
That completes our morning orders. I'm sorry, we have one more. Chair recognizes Representative Elam for a morning order.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the night that I lost my election by 96 votes, initially it was, it was a lot of pain. We'd worked very, very hard and it really hurt. But as I looked around the room, I saw the people around me and it was my family and my closest friends. We own a family business, we own a multimillion dollar business. And I, you know, God knows sometimes when we don't know. And at the time, I had passed my business to my children, my four children, Joe, Susie, James, Lydia, and they were all working hard and I wasn't providing them the leadership that I needed. This storm came, we have well over a quarter of a million dollars in uninsured losses, tremendous damage. They need me and you really don't need me anymore. But I've enjoyed being here. Mr. Speaker, I just want to tell you, you are a tremendous leader. I served 20 years as a Marine officer. I served under some phenomenal generals and sir, you match right with them. I honor you with the deepest honor. I want to say especially about, posthumously about our Rouge Chair. One thing I did in the very beginning, I always went to the Rouge meetings. It was amazing, I learned so much. I went a couple of times and I kept going and I've kept going. And what I realized is that he constantly cajoled almost every person that came up there. Sudden little joke, kind of yanked them around. But you know, when I went up there, he never did that to me. And I want to feel deep in my heart, it was because I'm a Marine. There's a special feeling, Chairman Willard, Chairman Hitchens, among Marines that's often unspoken. He never said it to me personally, but he gave me just tremendous special, special respect when I came before him and I will believe with all my life it's because that I'm a Marine. So to him and you two chairs, super fidélus. In closing, I would like to say thank you to obviously the Governor, this entire House and what you've done. This session is historical. It's unprecedented. It is unprecedented what we have done as a House to directly help because of a storm to a particular area of the country. In southwest Georgia, we often do feel that we're forgotten. We feel that no one cares. But you've sent a message, I'm going to be able to take home a message that is so powerful that we care. You can always say, "I love you, I care for you," but I tell you, when you take out your wallet and you send that, then they know. And the last thing I want to say is to Chairman Belton and Al Williams and Dean. My greatest time up here was a Military Affairs Committee. We did so much, we did so much and it was because of your leadership and I appreciate you all very much. Appreciate the entire House. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Chairman Willard to introduce the Doctor of the Day.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Speaker allowed me to come up here and tell you goodbye. Just joking. But this is my last time to be up here and I appreciate all the friendships that I've developed through the years and the great people I've worked with in the House. It's been an honor to be here. My last opportunity to introduce the Doctor today is a good friend of mine, Dr. John Harvey. John Harvey is the medical director, I'm sorry, the director, a Director of the Medical Association of Georgia. He also has served as President of that association back in 2015 and 16. He oversees the Transitional Year Residence Program at Gwinnett Medical Center and this is the part that's amazing because he is also very involved in his community and charity work. He's cared for patients who were evacuated during the Katrina and Rita hurricanes and the Haiti earthquake. And he was a medical command officer during the Centennial Park bombing that took place during the 1996 Olympics. I'd like to, all of you to give Dr. Harvey a very warm welcome to the House of Representatives.
Speaker Ralston, good to see you again. Thank you. It's truly an honor to be back down here with you and I know you got called back to the session because of the disaster that we had in southwest Georgia. I too worked with that. We have a medical reserve corps that we've established and we had physicians on call to deploy during the emergency or to the shelters if Dr. O'Neal called and we needed to provide medical care and assistance in the shelters. So I share with you the concern for what happened to our state and our citizens. I'm also honored today, as was mentioned, I have moved from my active general surgical career into being a program director of the Transitional Residency and I am honored to have with me two young physicians today, Pedro Ramirez and Blake Christiansen, who are going into the future to be physicians, hopefully in this state. And they're here to help me provide care because I was still on the cutting edge, so I brought some support. But it's an honor to be here today and bless all of you, have safe travels home when you leave Atlanta and we appreciate the service you provide to the citizens of this great state. Thank you.
We have one birthday over the weekend. I hope that you will help me wish a early happy birthday to the Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, Chairman Jay Powell. We're going to, I want to make all the House members aware that there will be reserved seating at the Meadows service in the First Baptist Church of Calhoun tomorrow and the attendants there will be directing you to that when you arrive. Reminder that visitation with the family is from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. and the service at 2:00. We are going to stand at ease until 11:45 for this reason. We are waiting on an adjournment resolution to be prepared that deals with some contingencies. Our objective though is to, depending on what action the Senate takes, is possibly relieve you from having to come back to the Capitol on Monday. So if you'll bear with us till we get that down and get an agreement with the other chamber. So we're going to be at ease until 11:45. So we're going to be at ease until 11:45.
The House will continue to be at ease until noon. The House will continue to be at ease until noon.
Every once in a while, I don't do them as often as I... I don't do them as often as I used to. Oh, I still do them. I still do them at this point. Huh? Well, that's the doctor say that's better for the heart. And my doctor says that my heart is better suited for business, so... So I must be doing something right. It affects. Well, I do too. I do too. I just can't do it like I used to. One or two and I'm done. It's all really worried about what you're doing properly with your blood pressure. Yeah. That's why I was made. Anything that gets us out of here is why I was made. You know? It feels like day forty and I'm almost in step out of my... I cleaned my smoker all up, ready to go, and was told that we're not responsible for anything this year. And I said, "It's just why I was made." And I'm grateful for both of you. Now, I don't know when we've even done it. Right? There's enough turkey. We got turkey on Tuesday, right? Ninety-eight cents a pound. That's pretty good. They had a, I'll play the salmonella across the country. Huh? And heading west. Were they white? Well, it's... Could've been snowed. Maybe, maybe they were just forming up when they were coming over. Because I think all birds fly, they're blocked unless they're murmuring. There's thousands of them. Excuse me? Sign up over here. I'm not becoming so anxious to see these people in January. With all the students present. What are we doing while we're pouring the turkey? Ed Rydner's in very public, trying to fix this. I hope so. Twenty-ninth of December of November, right?
The House will come back to order. The House will come back to order. Mr. Clerk, would you ring the bell? All members will report back to the floor of the House. The Clerk will read the caption to a group of privileged resolutions.
Commending federal reforestation programs for the consideration regarding mandatory requirements for the planting of only one specific species of tree. Recognizing Carolyn Hope Hilton, recognizing Trent Bateman Hilton, recognizing Chase Walker Hilton, honoring the life and memory of Billy E. Etheridge, recognizing and commending Lieutenant Colonel David C. Simons upon the occasion of his retirement from the Georgia Air National Guard, commending Major Susie Kalin Elum for valor and heroism in the face of the enemy, honoring the life and memory of John Francis Dooley, recognizing and commending Clear Springs Missionary Baptist Church on the occasion of its hundred and sixtieth anniversary, recognizing November sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Women's Entrepreneurship Day at the State Capitol, and for other purposes. That completes the reading of the privileged resolutions.
Is there any objection to adopting the privileged resolutions? The Chair hears none and the resolutions are adopted. Chair recognizes Chairman Matt Dollar for an announcement.
Thank you, Speaker. The Short Term Rental Study Committee will meet following adjournment upstairs in four oh three.
Chair recognizes Chairman Andy Welch for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Public Safety Subcommittee on Appropriations will meet in six oh six CLOB. We'll have a presentation on the criminal E filing system. Thank you. And that's at one thirty today.
We... We needed to hear from this member while we're in special session. He has saved the best for last. Chair recognizes Representative Al Williams for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would hate to waste this time on just an announcement, so I prepared an address. But thank each and every one of you for coming to this special session and certainly for the work that has been done here. But I want to remind us that on the thirteenth of January, the day before the session opens, we will have our annual prayer convocation. And some of you I've missed and you've always told me how great a Christians you were, but you aren't able to make it at two o'clock on that Sunday. I've never been able to quite understand that. So I've forgiven you numerous times, but I've reached my seventy-seven. I will look for you. Somebody got that. Thank you. I will look for you on Sunday at two o'clock. Now, the Speaker never misses. Majority Leader does not need prayer, so he misses often. But we will look this year to see if we can correct that. Thank you. Now, one of the things that we're going to do special this year, we try and honor any recently fallen member of the House on that, at that convocation. And I've asked Representative Frazier, who does a magnificent job of doing a big etching. So we will be presenting an etching to the Meadows family from the prayer convocation at two o'clock on the Sunday before and right before the Wild Hogs supper. Additionally, this year, a gentleman whom I've never met, but I've heard a lot about, this prayer convocation is named for Reverend E. Tillman, but there was a gentleman from North Georgia, a Republican, who along with him, they formed the Prayer Caucus over twenty-one years ago. North Georgia, a Republican, who along with him, they formed the prayer caucus over twenty years ago. And he's coming to deliver the address this year. I'm looking forward to his presence. We'd like to have you. Two o'clock, it'll be in the north wing of the Capitol. We look forward to it. We have a great program planned. Won't keep you very long, I promise you. If we start right on time at two, you won't miss much of the Hogs supper, just a little. But we look forward to seeing you. Well, Mr. Speaker, as, as much as I hate to do this and release, relieve you of the burden of having me in this well, I am going to leave now, but I wish each and every one of you a very happy Thanksgiving, and I'll see you in a few. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, of leaving the well. No crying, please, sir, and no gnashing of teeth.
Representative, I plan to be there again this year, and I'll see what I can do about bringing the Majority Leader with me. That completes our announcements, but we do have one more item of business. The Chair recognizes the Majority Leader of the House for a resolution. Clerk will read the resolution.
Unnumbered House Resolution relative to meetings and adjournments of the House of Representatives and for other purposes.
Chair recognizes the Majority Leader to speak to H.R. one-four E.X.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon. It's been a good morning. You can take a look at H.R. one-four E.X. as it's on the board, and we can go through it. I'll read some of it, but let me tell you what, what basically it does. Basically, this is an adjournment resolution for all of us to consider. I believe it does two important things for us today. First, this resolution ensures that we as a body are able to demonstrate requisite respect for our late rules Chairman John Meadows. I know that many of you, as I will, we will travel to Calhoun tomorrow to celebrate his life and his memory. And this resolution respects our time and our ability to do so. Second, this resolution provides for the necessary contingencies as our Senate colleagues consider three bills that this House passed yesterday. And this is with full cooperation from the Senate as we work through the details of this resolution. Number one, first contingency. Should the Senate pass clean versions of the bills that we passed yesterday, the special session would end, and there would be no further action that would need to be taken by this House. We could adjourn, signee die, and we, and we will. Should the Senate make changes to any of the bills that we passed yesterday in any manner, we will return to complete our business on Monday. Now, there is a legal precedent for us to, for the members to not be here in the morning, but for the Speaker to designate someone to bring this House to order and await the changes, await the action of the Senate. And if they, if they follow the number-one version with no changes, then we could, the clerk would accept the, and transmit to the Governor, and the special session would be ended, and we would adjourn, signee die. Our work would be done. You're welcome to be here. This House will come to order at eight-thirty in the morning, but it's not mandatory that you be here. You will receive your compensation for the day in be, as being present. We have the advice of Legislative Council in conjunction with the Senate, with the Senate Majority Leader and the, and the leadership in the Senate, and certainly with the Speaker's approval, and those sign-offs, that this process should work. It would be very respectful of our members to allow us to get back to our families in preparation for Thanksgiving, complete the action that we're required to do constitutionally on, during this special session. We will be fully, we will have fully attended to our, to our business if they pass clean bills back to us. If not, we have some more work to do. Mr. Speaker, I think that's what the bill, what this resolution will ask the House to allow us to do. Again, if anyone would like to attend in the morning, they're more than welcome. If not, we will conduct the business of the House in this appropriate way with all contingencies covered if there were any, any concerns as to the action of the Senate. Mr. Speaker, if there are any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
You don't appear to have any questions.
Well, colleagues, thank you. I think we have something we can work with here, and I believe the Senate is certainly, I hope that they're committed to passing the legislation that we thoughtfully and respectfully passed to help Georgians across this state. Thank you for your action on, on that, and I ask for your favorable consideration on H.R. one-four E.X. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield the will.
Chair wants to thank the Majority Leader for his work on putting this together, also the Minority Leader for being a part of that process, and it had been the Chair's intention to, for symbolic reasons, if nothing else, to not have anybody here tomorrow out of respect to Chairman Meadows, but it, it dawned on me last night that he would say, save the money. Save the money. Send, take that money and send it to southwest Georgia. Uh, but there's no point in, in having everybody here for, for that. So here's what we will do. We will ask you to check your email tomorrow. We will email you confirmation that the Senate has passed clean measures, in which case there will be no session here on Monday. And if they make any changes, we will let you know that, and we will be here at ten a.m. Monday morning. But you will find that out by email, so sometime before the end of the day tomorrow, so, so keep an eye out for that. I am hopeful that they will pass clean bills and that we can get, bring this process to a close, and I'm so hopeful and so confident that they will do the right thing that I'm going to wish you a happy Thanksgiving today, and tell you that I'll see most of you in Athens on December the fourth? Ninth? December ninth? Okay. This, yeah, I'm getting confused with the S.E.C. championship. I'll be there, too. I hope. Um, but I'll see you in Athens at Biennial on Sunday, December nine. All those in favor of the adoption of House Resolution one-four E.X. will vote aye. Those opposed will vote no, and the clerk will unlock the machines. Have all members voted? Have all members voted? If so, the clerk will lock the machine on the adoption of House Resolution one-four E.X. The ayes are one hundred and forty-four. The nays are one. He can be here if he wants to be. The resolution has, having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore adopted. What purpose does Representative Jones rise?
Mr. Speaker, is it not true that I inadvertently and mistakenly pressed the button for Representative Scott Turner? That was not my intention. It was a huge mistake. And I, and I request to be removed from this seat to another seat somewhere in the chamber.
I'll let you take that up with him. The resolution having received the requisite constitutional majority is therefore adopted and this House is adjourned.